And we're doing so.
I was just trying to look for a spot to park.
We said that, actually.
You said that he's out there looking for a place to park. You're going to need him.
And it is 7:15 on Monday, January 7th. We have an agenda that has been posted, an agenda that has been handed out. If not, personally like a copy can do so request. Prior to anything going on. We have two public hearings this evening. One for ZPT Energy Solutions and a continuation for a ground-mounted solar facility up on Little West Road. The ZPT one is on Reed Street. At this time, I'll be recusing myself and leaving the room for any conversation or interaction with the ZPT solar field or application of student pending litigation. So Libby will be taking all this into mind.
Okay, this is a new one, right? This is Reed Street?
Can I have a copy of the agenda? Do you have one?
No, I don't, but I can.
All right, it's okay. No big deal.
Chairman George Corriti, I represent the... Look in here. So I'm disappointed that we've lost...
We had four.
I understand. I appreciate that.
And it's only an information thing tonight. You're not handing in plans, right?
We've already submitted plans.
We already have the plans.
For the plans on Reed Street?
Yeah. This was a public hearing.
Yeah, we get them all.
So this is not related to the lawsuit in any way. So it is a concern that we do have four members of the board. You know I need a... The board knows that a supermajority is required. We need four out of five.
We got four out of five.
It's the end. I also have confirmed with the clerk's office that the town has adopted a statute that allows for a missing board member to step back in. At the time of my last meeting, the board had never heard of that procedure, although I was told... And I was told at that time, the board did not audiotape or videotape the meetings. I do note that the meeting, there is a video camera setup. I don't know if that's the board videotaping this. So is there a videotape, audiotape, or transcript of this meeting available?
No.
Well, you have minutes.
Minutes. And he did step back in.
What's that?
Last meeting, he did come back in.
Not for our meeting?
No.
No. So he's still out on that. In fact, there's only three members at that time. And now we have four members and not a full contingent of the board on a completely unrelated project, unrelated to litigation for which there's no conflict, just for the record. And you don't have the procedures in place to take advantage of the statutory remedy to fix the Mullen problem. So I will talk to my client about seeing whether or not we're going forward tonight.
Well, there's four of you. Four of us.
I understand.
These are the four that you need for your supermajority.
I'm entitled to a contingent of the board. Five-member board. Now you're telling me I need a unanimous decision rather than a five or four-fifths majority? We're going to go forward. We're going to trust that perhaps he can curate under the Mullen's rule with the minutes. I'm not sure if that's going to work since the statute requires a transcript and audio tape. We'll go forward. I would like, for the record, whoever's recording the minutes, that we object to the recusal on an unrelated matter and that we will be seeking alternative remedy as may be authorized by law. Thank you.
Yes, I do. Good evening, everybody. My name is Barry Swolki. I am a principal in ZPT Energy Solutions. We're pre-seeing on a project that we're proposing at 7:49 Reed Street in Warren.
Okay.
The project is a...
Can you turn it so they can see it?
Sure. And I'll get it the way. And what I want to do is just give you an overview of the project and where we are in the process and what we've accomplished so far. Then what I intend to do is turn it over to Stephanie McDonald from Cusco Romeo, who is our civil engineer, to go through a drainage solar vision and phase in plan for the proposed projects. We have submitted plans, which we haven't provided you. We also have some supplemental information that we will be providing you tonight dealing with some visual analysis that we completed from some of the survey work we did. Okay? On vacancy. Our office. Could you turn it down so north is up? There you go. Thank you.
Oh, we'd rather the audience see that. We'll have our own fans here.
Okay, all right, very good.
Kathy will be right back with a set of plans for the other board members.
Great, thank you.
Well, you can continue.
Yeah.
When we get the plans, we'll...
Okay. Very good. All right. So again, we're proposing to conserve the three-megawatt AC and ground-mounted solar energy system on the property. We've already appeared before conservation in the township. We've actually been before them twice. We are going before conservation only for a limited notice of intent. There is an existing driveway that accesses the area that we're going to be using that we are improving slightly. It's not in a wetland area. It's in a buffer area. We're basically extending it about a foot and regrading some of it to improve it. That's the only reason that we're going before conservation. The proposed array, any drainage features, are all outside of 100-foot from a wetland area. They're outside of any areas, more than 100 feet of any areas jurisdictional areas for conservation. We are meeting with conservation again this Wednesday. Our expectation is that we'll be discussing conditions when we're going to close the matter. So we expect that to be wrapped up.
What were the plans that you dropped off for conservation tonight? Are the same plans that we have here?
They've been... They've provided some additional features that conservation requested. They're not in the plans that have to be...
No.
No? Yeah. The... I got one. Conservation, our wetland line and the proposed work is peer reviewed by GZA. And that was the reason for the minor modification. It's a plan with some additional detail.
What was the reason? We can't carry you back here. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, okay. Let me... I'll stand over here maybe. All right? The work that we proposed, again, were just a minor modification to an existing roadway to access the property in a buffer area, basically extending it about a foot so it's passable and grading it because there's some divots and inconsistencies in it. That work was peer reviewed by a third-party engineering firm, GZA. And what they did is they confirmed, number one, our wetland line. And number two, they reviewed our submissions, the plans, how we proposed to do the work, protect the wetlands, the resource areas that are adjacent to this roadway. The array itself is more than 100 feet outside of any wetland or other jurisdictional area of conservation. So that's really not... They're not concerned about that. So we made an effort to do that on purpose. So there's some additional detail that we had to provide, some cross-sections of how we're going to install a guardrail on one, I think on both sides of the roadway to protect the wetland area. Those are the types of things that were provided in the additional information that conservation requested of us.
It's too bad because aesthetically, it'll take away from that nice back road.
I don't really believe so. It's... Again, it's... We're extending it a foot, widening it a foot.
We can't have comments until he finishes his presentation.
Okay. So we're meeting with them again on Wednesday. Our expectation is that the meeting will be closed. We'll review conditions and it should be approved.
Are we going to have plans that show all the changes?
We can provide those to you. Okay? That's not a problem. They would just provide the conservation on Monday. No, Friday. Friday. So this is happening quickly. So we will provide them to you. Okay? We are not requesting any variances or waivers for your bylaws. We are... Our intent is to comply with all the requirements, which Stephanie will go through and outline. The other thing that we're doing or that we've done is we've worked very closely with the landowner to locate and position this project in such a way that, number one, it's outside of the resource areas, more than 100 feet away, so it's protective of them. And secondly, that the array will not be visible from any neighbors or the roadway. And in fact, we'll be providing additional information this evening to the board, which demonstrates and provides an actual model, not a rendering, but a model that's based on the survey that was done on the property by a drone. It's called the LiDAR survey and that constructs digitally the characteristics of the property, not only the elevations, but the actual trees and residences, et cetera. We cleared out the area where the solar array is going to go. And you'll see how it's going to look, well, actually, you won't see it because you can't see it once it's constructed. So this is not a rendering, not an artist's rendering, not a projection. It's actual. It's based on thousands of pieces of digital data taken from a drone that flies over the property and creates a snapshot. And we have elevated views, street views, and cross-sectional views. So that information was provided to you this morning. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Stephanie to move over some of the other aspects of the design. And if there are questions afterward, I'll be...
First, I'm just going to start with an overview of the site. Again, it's on Reed Street. Right now, the site, the northeast and south, is bounded by undeveloped land. And to the west is actually Reed Street. So here, I just put, just from the assessor's map, where the actual site is in regards. We have Route 990 to the south and then all the different parcels.
Before you change that, you go back. Why do you not have all the land delineations on our set of drawings? Because that's what I was looking for, is where all the abuttes are and all the land that this solar field is abutting.
Right here.
It doesn't have all the property on Reed Street.
This isn't even the full site. I want to see the full site.
It's a top hole.
This is right here, right?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't even show all the property coming down.
I love your mind.
So that one's not included here.
Right. This was just a visual from your GIS mapping that I just did to show everyone today. Just a general bird's-eye view, but there should be a location map. Again, it doesn't have all of the...
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
And also, just as a point of clarification, we're not leasing the entire property. We're only leasing the area that we're going to construct.
I'm sorry?
We're not leasing the entire property?
Yeah, I realize that.
Only that property, which we are constructing the array.
Yeah, I realize that.
And the array will be in this area, just for overall, but I'll get into... So again, here's the site. Blue is the property lines. I've shown the orange with the 100-foot buffer, solar buffer. And then the green is the 150-foot natural vegetated buffer, just to show. This is an overview of the site where Reed Street's over here. This is the existing access road that's going up and into the site. And our array, limited disturbance, and drainage features are all in this first little hole.
So that's the only place you have any panels, is right there?
That's correct.
Correct. That's the limited disturbance is right here. And then again, a little bit with the access road into the site. And I have... I'll tell you guys what sheet I'm on. I'm going to start off with the erosion sediment control. So again, we're coming off of Reed Street. We have construction entrance and silt fence that will line the entire roadway, which is just over 2,000 linear feet. This was the crossing that Barry had mentioned that conservation's reviewing. And everything has bubbled. It's just the additional stuff that's not in your plan. That was a third-party reviewer. So it's just additional wetland delineation that the third-party reviewer added to the plan that they had and then a little bit more just in this area. This is a little bit of a blow-up on CP 101, just showing additional rows of straw bale where it can fit in between the access road, the guardrail, and then before the wetlands just to add additional protection during construction for any potential sediments to go off the road due to insulation. Other than insulation, the site really won't be accessed very much, very frequently. So again, this is more of the...
Say that again about the road?
So it's not a big frequent use. You know, it's not like...
After it's built.
Correct.
Once it's constructed, there'll be maintenance that occurs a few times a year?
First operation being asked.
And how many trucks during construction?
I think we're supposed to wait till after the presentation. Keep going.
CP 103 should show the additional of the access road here. Again, you can see the silt fence along the edges and blocks. CP 103 shows, again, this is the area that the array will be on, the northern area. Again, we have on the right-hand side of the page, the property line. The orange is the 100-foot buffer for solar requirements. And the green is the 150 natural vegetated buffer. After we come into the site, we have just a little bit of an access road around the site for safety and for fire access. There is silt fence and backed with hay bales to the north as stormwater, the site is graded to the north. So there's a high point and it starts to grade down as well as grade to the south. So anywhere down gradient, we have erosion sediment controls, again, to prevent any potential sediment from construction into neighboring wetlands and off-site. CP 104 shows the southern area of the array, site that will be used. And this is where majority of the drainage stormwater features are. So again, we have access road around the site. This is the area of the array panel. We have a swale on the eastern side, again, to allow flow to concentrate here and get detained into a detention basin, one of two detention basins proposed. And another swale on the western side, a smaller one, again, to gather flows and concentrate them into another smaller detention basin. So stormwater handbook in Master's List of Law say we have to intenuate peak clothes. And peak clothes have been intenuated for the five, 10, 25, and 100-year flows.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I didn't hear you.
Yeah, thank you.
So stormwater is intenuated, so matches existing or is less than existing conditions when, from what's existing now to after we have the solar, after the solar panels will be installed. And the swales and the detention basins allow that to collect the stormwater and slow it down before leaving the site. Stormwater patterns mimic the existing conditions, so they still follow the contours that are present on-site. And then with some outlet structures, which I can get into, we'll just time the release of the stormwater to mimic that of what it currently is doing right now. So we'll get into that along with the layout of the array panels. CS 100 shows again the overview. And then you can see the actual panels are overlaid into the area. And then we'll go into further into zooming in areas. CS 101, again, is the entrance road, which, again, near the wetland area, just has a little bit of a guardrail on the sides to keep everything on track and on the road. So that was extended from the plans that you guys have, the commission has for a conservation commission. A little bit more on each side. CS 102, again, shows just the access road onto the site. CS 103, you can see the layout along, again, the road around the site. Here is the property line. Orange is the 100-foot setback and green is the vegetated buffer, natural vegetated buffer setback. And then we get to talk about the stormwater a little bit more. And she, CS 104. So again, we have a swale on the west and the east, goes into detention basins. There is an outlet structure and an emergency overflow weir. The one change that, small change that we made from the plans that planning board has and the conservation, is they just wanted to see this outlet structure shifted westerly so that if the emergency overflow needs to be used, it's not going directly into this potential burnout pool, but it'll be to the western side of it. And with the natural grades, we were able to just move the level spreader to the west and then that will naturally direct flows to the west of that potential burnout pool. For drainage. And then I'll quickly just go over some of the LiDAR views.
Also, just one clarification for the work that we're doing for the roadway. The guardrails will be over a limited area. It's not the entire length of the roadway. It's only a couple hundred feet where we're adjacent to the buffer area. The rest of it's going to be remaining as is.
So the packet that I handed out are just a few more sheets of what an actual bird's-eye view will look like from the surrounding areas on the site. If you just flip in... I'm sorry I didn't put on the first sheet, but the fourth sheet on the back is just a little key to see where you're looking, but I'll go over it as well. So the one that I blew up here is... I'm just going to... I know this is really small, but I'm going to talk and then I can contest these around someone else, things a little bit further. So this picture right here is looking from the access road down into the site. You can see the access road and kind of look at the terrain and see how it's something in a little bit and...
That's the drone, the YR?
Yes.
What kind of scale does that give you? What's the scale of the YR?
It's really up to us to do that. I mean, it's... The LiDAR itself, it just, it flies over the property and just takes thousands and thousands of pictures. And so that, this is an outfit that's created from that.
Thank you.
This blue section is the proposed site?
Yes. That's the proposed array.
Wait a minute. They have to finish their presentation.
I started it, I'm sorry.
And the second and third photos are also from this view, looking from Reed Street down, the access road, and then the solar array. And then this one's a little bit lower, not as bird's-eye. And you can see, kind of, you can see the, you know, the clearing and the areas are deep within the site and not very visible from Reed Street. You have all this forest to look at before you see it. And again, we're looking this way. So picture number, which is label number two, is coming from the east, looking this way on the site. So there are two, I guess these would be the closest areas of development or clearing. And again, this is again from a bird's-eye view. And you can see that the forest is heavily grown in. There's, I don't... I'll scale it back, but definitely, I mean, the access road is over 2,000 linear feet. So here, you're close to 2,000 linear feet of forest between also the closest neighbor and the array. The number three is coming from this way, looking. And this is a very aerial view, just bird's-eye, again, seeing 91, 390, and then the development. These ones didn't come out as clear printed, but again, show more of a street view. And you can see the street, you can see the trees, and you can't even see any of the blue for the proposed array. Number five, it's a little bit different. It's again, this angle, which is the closest side to the proposed array. And I know it's hard, but this is the street view and this is the tree line with limited views. And again, six is over here as well, coming up there. And you can't see any of the blue proposed.
There's also a natural feature to this property, which is to our benefit, and that is that where the array is going is that it's almost like a fishbowl. If you look at some of the cross-sections, it's actually at a low point and there's high points on either side. So that adds an additional buffer beyond the existing extensive vegetation.
You have restrictions here?
They're not in there. They're in what we handed out.
The last three sheets are sections?
Oh, they're not real sections.
But those are actual sections.
Yeah, there's no... Where are they cut?
There's a sheet, a key.
Sheet four shows the key.
Four from this, the force sheets from the back.
When we provide you the revised drawings, we'll provide larger, larger pictures of those. They just, you know, where...
As if possible, I want real sections going through the top of.
We can show them on a... We can show them on a map that shows where the sections are.
These, real section from top of the site.
Yeah, tho- those just, yes, but just to be clear, what you have in front of you are real sections. That, that, what created the topo for the site is what, is what you see right there.
And this was done recently?
Yes.
Like in summer?
No, like in the fall.
I see a lot of trees there, leaves.
Yes, it was in the fall.
Okay.
So we have looking east, again, you see the lay of the land, naturally, um...
And the cleared section is about, that's where the array is going?
Looking northeast, this section, how it really drops down here, the array. And now, looking north.
So that's a, that's not a YR picture, that's a projected picture?
That's an actual pic, that's an actual, the topography is actual, the trees are actual, and what we did is we cleared out where the array is going. So that's an actual...
So we modified the picture?
Well, I did, to show you how it's gonna look, what's constructed.
Okay, understood, thank you.
So the area with no trees was, was the only thing that was manipulated to show that these pieces were there?
Roger, thank you.
So that's the site.
Good job. That's your voice, though.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
I'd like to let him pop, sorry.
No, go ahead, Derek, I have to think about it. I'm an IT guy, I'm a technological guy, I love electricity, I love solar panels, I love everything, so don't take me wrong with this project. I have a lot of people behind me that I'm concerned about the neighbors and all that, so, I, by looking at the topography, I do see a lot of potential of damaged property way of south-east of the project. Is there anything on your plans that will assure that these people are not gonna get any water damage before and after the project?
Yes, so that goes back to the detention basins, so the site is naturally graded, I can see, you can see the contours, so water flows perpendicular to contours. This area is all coming down here, this area is all coming down here. We have a swale, so it's a depression, um, that's going to capture the water and direct it the way that we want it to go. Um, again, this, the site is, as you saw, has an incline above, um, so water's coming in here, going to get into the swale and exit into this basin. So we have stormwater calculations, um, that's my forte, um, upsizing basins and playing with this outlet structure. So we, we play with how much water in drainage areas are coming into this, that we're capturing from the site and any drainage areas, so it could be, um, north of the site, but there's a little bit of a peak at the top, so it is just pretty much this area, um, and this is in the drainage report, um, which the areas are clearly marked, um, going to capture it. We have, um...
When you're doing those calculations, what...
Wait a minute.
Sorry.
Um, so we capture it and then we play with the structure, saying, okay, um, if we, you know, put a 12-inch orifice, if it's just the grate, and we play with the elevation so that, um, the water is contained and slowly, slowly trickles out, and we, like I said, we do it on, um, several different, um, yearly storms, and 100-year storm is, um, what the state regulation is, is to, um, match pre-verse-post, attenuate the flows, and that has been done. So, anything additional from the site, I mean, it's already going down there, we're adding very limited, um, disruption, but we're in essence, um, giving the water a place to go instead of just, uh, free-falling as it currently does. So it is detaining it and lessening it than what it currently is.
I have a question. How close are the, um, neighbors? How far away? I know the road going in is 2,000 feet.
Yes.
How far away are there any neighbors?
So, let me just, oh, that's... What's the personal question, the person, the question?
Your neighbors, any of the neighbors to this property that, uh, what is the closest neighbor house to the facility?
Orwell.
Orwell, well.
So we have, um, 150 feet from the natural vegetated buffer, that's kind of the edge of the swale, and that's from the property line?
So technically, a retention pond retains the water from a big rainstorm and then lets it go. In that case, it's letting it go through someone else's property?
Slowly, no, we're matching, so the whole, this part of the site is, everything currently is flowing this way.
Yes, but when it, right now, it's full of trees and it rains and it kinda like absorbs and everything, right now, now you're making a river around the property into that pond.
Yes, so the pond is slowing down the water, it's collecting it, and then...
Correct, but after that, where is that water going?
So it's gonna follow existing drainage patterns, which is to the south.
I understand, so it's going to the outside of the property, right?
Yes, yes.
So somebody is gonna get that water, do you assure me with your calculations that no damage to other neighbors in that area are gonna get from flooding? I just want to be assured that...
Well, I can assure you that the, what's existing, the existing amount of water that's getting down to the, to the neighbors now will be the same and replaced.
No, no, my point, I wanna get to the point where if there's flooding because of this to the neighbors, somebody has to, you know, cover that.
Want the rate be less?
Yes, so you can match.
So, so what will have the flow, the volume is the volume, that doesn't change. It, it's, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a amount of rain over square footage.
Well, the volume would have increased because the trees don't absorb it.
There, there is absorption that happens because the, the area beneath the paddles is grass, number one. Number two, what we're doing is we're collecting, we're managing the water, we're collecting it, and it's, and some of it's infiltrating, some of it is gonna be flowing, but flowing at a much lower rate under a very, under a much more controlled situation. And in fact, what we have is besides the basins that collect the water, if, if it goes out through the outflow, there are what are called level spreaders, I'm sure you're, you're aware of them, the public may not be, which again, distribute the water and slow it down further. The key to stormwater is speed, it's flow, and that's, and we're, and we're, we're improving what's there today.
But that's if there's no trees, being, being that, I think, completely forested.
Even with the trees, there is, it, it go, it, it flows across the ground, just like it does today, just like it will in the future.
But you can't compare a tree with a grass field.
So you, you, we can, um, there's different curve numbers, so there's different numbers that we use, um, so a heavy vegetated, treed area has a lower number, it takes lo, it takes longer for the drop of water to hit the tree and get down to, say, this site, right, this, this design point.
No, the trees absorb water.
They don't absorb much water.
Hundreds of gallons a tree.
Yeah, they don't absorb it from the sky, they absorb, it, it, the sheet flow on the ground, which we'll have now, and...
Look, hey, we can Google it, we can search for numbers and everything, my whole point here is, if this project causes problem to the neighbors, I have a concern.
That's why I asked, how close.
And, and if I can address that also, see, one of the things with our, with our companies, we not only develop the project, get the permits, we actually construct it, we build it, we do the operation, operations and maintenance. If there's an issue with stormwater, it's my responsibility to repair it. You, you're township officials, you go to the property, you're gonna inspect it periodically, if there's an issue, it's my responsibility, period. And you can put that in the record, and I'm, I am staying with this property for the duration. All right, I'll leave you my card, you call me up, we have, we've developed, in Massachusetts, 50 of these projects, and we maintain all of them. That condition's never occurred, in the unlikely event it does, it's my responsibility.
I'd like to hear that, 'cause if this project was, was, had no neighbors down at the bottom, I wouldn't be asking this.
But, um, and, and I don't take that responsibility lightly.
That's why I asked, how close are the neighbors?
The, the neighbors, they're homes, Stephanie, how close are the homes? 'Cause it's not so much the property boundary, the homes.
Yeah.
I mean, the neighbor...
There's not a property boundary.
The property line is, your bylaw requires 150 feet.
Along, you're outside of that.
I'm outside of that, okay?
Okay.
All right, which is, you know, and again, it's not 150 feet of clear cut, it's vegetative buffer, so that's gonna slow things down too. But the bottom line is, and, and this, the less, you bring up a great point, it is my responsibility, period.
So what does conservation have to say since they got the plans on Friday?
I mean, they had to just make, they just made few plan, few changes.
Yeah, can I?
Yep. You already did tell.
I, I would, I, um, we, frankly, conservation had minor comments, and I don't know how familiar you are with your conservation board, they are extraordinarily thorough, okay? We had another project that we were before them for six months, all right? They had, and, and quite frankly, we learned, all right? I mean, we're not, I mean, I'm not stupid, okay? If, if there's certain things that I know that are hot topics, I'll address it. One of the reasons why we kept the project 100 feet outside of the resource areas was because that makes conservation happy, all right? Makes my life a little more difficult, frankly, but it makes conservation happy. They had very minor comments, the peer reviewer had very minor comments. I mean, what we're doing with respect to the resource areas and conservation is extraordinarily minimal on this project.
Thank you.
Question, other changes with the guardrails, will the guardrails be visible going into the property, or are they, they're outside there with the water?
They're in the back, they're in the back, and, and again, and I, I should've made this, I should've clarified it beforehand, it's only gonna be wherever we're in the buffer area, so it's, it's not 2,000 feet, it's, I think, 2...
It's like 200 on each side.
200 on each side. And they're gonna be, they're not gonna be metal guardrails, they're actually gonna be wood guardrails, so it'll be nice.
Yes?
Um, I have a question, um, this land is adjacent to a contamination site, which, when it was previously disturbed, resulted in all of our, many of our wells being contaminated and creating a whole myriad of problems, but, so I would like to know how you're planning to address that issue so that that's contamination site is not disturbed.
Right, right, that's, it was a former gas station, I believe, right?
Uh, junkyard.
Junkyard, okay, all right, well, I, I actually can give you some thoughts of that, 'cause my background is in environmental engineering, so I fortunately or unfortunately dealt with a lot of those situations. The disturbance that we're doing is superficial, we're not, you know, the only area that we're digging a little bit is where these basins are, and they're above groundwater, they're not gonna be, they cannot be within groundwater, so it's not gonna have any impact on groundwater quality, uh, and I would expect, because the natural, typically groundwater flow follows topography, I would expect that the groundwater flow is probably in that direction too, so it's not flowing safe where it's this residence, it's gonna be flowing in that direction. But we're, we're just gonna be clearing the trees, removing the stumps, we're not doing any excavation, we're not digging 25-foot deep holes, there's, we're not gonna be impacting any of the groundwater conditions that exist.
Will you be working with DEP because it's adjacent to the site?
Well, DEP, uh, DEP is aware of the site because they reviewed the wetland work, the wetland notification we did, um, so they're, they're aware of, of the, of what we're proposing, and they did provide comments as part of the conservation process, which we addressed there, and they were minor.
How close is the site to where you're gonna be working? How close is the dump site?
The dump site is up, can you click down the...
On Reed Street, right?
No, it's on the other side. Yeah, it's like thousands of feet away.
All right, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
All right, if, if I may, I have a couple other questions. If you wanna go to the access road, please, please, okay? How many trucks a day during peak of construction are you expecting on Reed Street to make that access there? You're aware that that's a terrible turn, right?
Yeah, and we are, and, um, you know, we, we, we would be open to putting a flagman during deliveries.
I need the, the whole, the access point right off of Reed Street, please, right there, yeah.
Yeah, we, we...
Why not make that access road come straight down from Reed Street and straight on to the property, so you'll be, you'll be changing the last 30 feet of it or whatever.
Here?
Yeah, see, see, see where you're on that corner coming in?
Yeah, I got you.
You see where Reed Street comes straight down or straight up? Straight up wouldn't make sense, but straight down, if you just came straight into the property from there, you're not having to make any corners, and that is a hugely dangerous corner for residents.
What I'd like to do is, can I, I'd like to just...
Look at it, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, my, here, my only condition is if there's, if there are no wetland or areas around there, which I don't think there are, I, I don't have a problem with it, I'd have to check with, uh, at the corner?
Yeah, that's right.
Right here? Okay, we would just make sure that in this area there are not, I mean, I'm not, you're not saying turn it this way, we can just straighten it out, right?
No, I'm saying, I, I, I would rather see a straight access into the property.
Would there maybe some wetlands in that area, which would be an issue for us?
That's an issue for me.
But I, I just, I can't disturb...
Let me, let me also ask how many trucks per day, because Reed Street, as you can see from just this little piece of property, is a very wet area. There's running water all, you know, all over, seasonal running water, it's not like there's rivers and, okay? But Reed Street, the road itself, is wet, and a lot of heavy traffic is gonna destroy the road.
Yeah, their, um, deliveries for the equipment are, are not consistent through the project, um, you know...
No, but overall, you can expect probably, um, 100 or so tractor trailers coming up and down Reed Street.
I don't think that, I don't think that many.
I don't know, we've seen some of these other projects that are similar sizes where the companies have actually estimated what their tra, traffic will be, and it's, it's pretty up there.
I, I, if you would like, I can provide that, I don't, this is not, this is, um, this is an average-sized system.
So are you willing to repair the road when you're done?
If we disturb the road, we repair it.
We can put that in order of conditions.
Yeah, I, I, again, I don't know how to make it any clearer, I own this project.
Okay, no, that's fine, I mean, these are questions that we ask everybody.
And, and I, and I'll, I'll go further, we, we did a series of projects in Southbridge where we, um, had some drainage that went on to the road, and we worked with Department of Public Works, and we repaired the issue. And we're, again, we're not, we've been in this market, we've been doing work in Massachusetts for five to six years, we intend to be here for quite a bit longer, we're not a one project in, one project out, so that, that's important to us.
Well, I, I appreciate you saying that, I do, and, and, and I do believe you, I mean, I, I have no recourse not to believe you, I don't know you, so, I mean, I, I believe what you're saying.
I ate it through conservation, so I must be truthful.
Fuck, so that's my concern, is the road, because it's a wet road, and you can see the road is brand-new, it's not even 10 years old, and you can already see that it swales from the trucks that go up and down it.
If, if, at the end of our project, if there's heaving in the road and we have to repair it as, as, as you indicated, make, make any conditions, okay, all right? So, so my action item is I will, we'll take a look at the access and whether we have some play, but if there's a wetland, that's gonna complicate things, okay? I just want to be clear, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, as, as long as you know that that's a huge concern for me, 'cause that corner is extremely dangerous.
We can add more than one... I mean, we could always put a flagman out there if we had to, I, I mean, as a...
I get it.
Yeah, just as secondary.
I get it.
Um, I think we should contact the chief of communities and ask him about that as well.
Yeah, they all get notified anyway, the chief, the highway.
If they wanna sit with us and go over it, we'd be more happy to do that, though.
Well, they may want details there while you work.
That's, that's fine.
I have no idea.
And if we have to fund that, that's okay too.
Oh, that would be yours.
Yes.
There would be no question on that part.
I was trying, I was trying to be soft.
No, that, that, I mean, that's fine, those are honest answers, I appreciate you looking into that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, at this time, uh, there are motion to continue the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have a question, yeah, just one quick question, so the grade, the nat, it's naturally graded and the swale is not engineered, it's a natural swale that is existing now?
No.
Oh, you're grading, you're grading the swale.
Yes, to deter the stormwater.
But you've already cleared that with conservation, right?
Yes, we have.
Thank you.
It's a 15-foot hill that you're moving on a day, right?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, there are motion to continue the hearing, so, they, to be determined.
What's the next meeting?
Um, that's up to Kathy. Because we... Because we already have some scheduled.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Is there a second? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, because we have another hearing.
Eight fifteen.
Yeah, eight fifteen, that pops off, yeah.
Still on daylight schedule.
Yeah. No, it doesn't change yet.
When is it, Kathy, when is it?
She'll have to let you know.
She'll let you know as soon as she knows.
Twenty-first.
We already have a hearing on the fourteenth, the twenty-first in his, well, the twenty-eighth, we might already have a ZPT for Coyle Hill Road.
We can sneak in, I can sneak in there, that'd make my life easy.
I don't care, let them do both on the same night.
At eight fifteen?
Yeah, that's fine.
That'd be, that'd be.
Have you make, make it easy for me?
Yeah, that'd be cool, I'd rather do both on the same night, for me to get you to know.
I appreciate that.
That's it, we'll definitely be there on the twenty, the other way we can move it.
Okay.
Okay, we would continue to eight fifteen?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Second hearing, it's a continuation, the hearing was special permit two eighty-one site plan forty-nine, Sin Karfa, Capital LLC under the rest road. The first question tonight, fellas, is have you had or received emails from Graves Engineering, Jeff Walsh?
Yes.
Okay, with that, have you fellas gone back and forth and laid out any of the questions that Jeff has asked or whatever, sir?
Yeah, so we received initial comments from Jeff, we provided him revised plans, revised documents, he had a couple outstanding comments today, we turned those revisions back around to Jeff, he acknowledged that we received them and that he's in agreement, everything's been addressed.
Okay, Kathy, we got nothing for you, Jeff?
Yes, I do have his.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we have that there, everybody can look at it, I've seen, I just wanted to have a statement made that way. Okay, so that squared away there, all right? There'll be a couple more questions from the planning board members, and again, I'm going to open it up to the floor, the resident areas, folks are going to ask one thing and one thing only. We've gone through quite a bit of conversation about the project, everybody's had comments. I'm going to ask all of you here tonight in attendance, dear boardists, to think about your questions you're going to ask tonight. If they're, if they're ones from last week or two weeks later, they've already been noted in our minutes, and the board has them. The concerns, other than what you have had anymore, if you wish to open up a dialogue with the applicant, we will so. It's not going to be one question right after the other leading into this, you know, verbal war here. They've heard, you've asked, they've asked or answered, you have received it as we have, okay, so this will move it on, and then at the end, we'll have some conversation, the board will have some further conversation. I'll start with the board first this evening, Mr. Souza.
Yeah, I'd like to know if Sin Karfa has had any contact with the Blakes on the driveway, they had concerns, and if so, I'd like to know what came out of those conversations.
So Carter McCann from Sin Karfa, I met with the Blakes at this point, probably about two months ago, they were very concerned about the overhead poles being right out their window. One of the changes that we made since that first set of plans, we removed all those poles and put everything underground. So while the road is still in the same spot that it was because of wetland concerns, everything is now underground, it'll be in a wooden stockade fence, it's really just one pad with a piece of utility equipment on it, it's not even our equipment, it's the utilities, National Grid, and then there's trees that are going to be planted around that.
And you had this conversation with Mr. and Mrs. Blake?
So about two months ago, before we made the change, I did, since then I've called them a couple times, I haven't heard anything back.
So no contact since then?
I've reached out, but yeah, I haven't heard.
What about the buffer around the driveway, since some of us feel that the driveway is part of the actual solar field or project?
So, again, because the road can't move because of wetland concerns, its location is the same, we have added trees around that pad area.
But no buffer.
In terms of vegetated or?
Terms of a hundred and fifty-foot buffer between a residential property and use, like the bylaws have.
Our view is that that is not solar, that's a dirt access road, so no, because of its location, we can't add buffer, it's, how about the property line?
All right, thank you for that. Has there been any further research or information available on increasing the size of the wetlands? Because we have noticed over time that in that area with the, the amount of solar ponds, that the wetland on the upper side has increased a bit. So we're wondering if there has been any more research or any more thought on that, and what can we do to control it?
So, good question. I'd like to talk about two things with the runoff and the wetlands, because I know there was major concern, I mean, from the Bowdries, about their well in the back and the location and direction of that runoff, so Travis, I think, can speak to that a little bit better
Just going to flip to this page, so Travis Brown of Andrews Survey and Engineering, as you mentioned, stormwater has been a concern, we've looked at peak rate runoff pre and post, we meet those, those calculations have been reviewed by Graves and signed off. In addition to those calculations, we've looked at a couple things. We've looked at flow to individual properties, so the Trombley property here, this area represents in orange the pre-conditions, which actually flows and hits their property line, the rest of this runoff would get into that wetland. So as part of our design, we are proposing a stormwater basin in this location, so that'll capture overland flow, contain that before discharging into the wetland. In addition to that, the majority of this area actually is meadow, this tree line here wraps around here, comes up in and goes in this direction, so a good portion of that will not change in ground cover from pre to post conditions, so the runoff would be decreased to that wetland. The second thing that we looked at was this large green area depicted, again, pre-conditions, there's a good amount of this site, our site that goes to the Blake property, which is here, and also we're looking at the Bowdrey property, which is here, so we analyze it at that property line where that would touch. So pre-conditions, once we start looking at post-conditions in those areas, we'll start with the Trombley piece, again, the area that flows to that property line of the Trombles has not changed. The ground cover has not changed, that's part of the hundred and fifty-foot vegetated area, what we plan to do, because this part is existing meadow, is intersperse some trees, so there's several trees that we have planted within that meadow, which provides a better vegetative area, and also provides some screening from the Trombley property into our site. So the second part of this, on the page that I just flipped from, this area was in green. You can see this is now red, so this area, anything that falls here would run down, get into the swale that runs basically from this point down to the basin, catch any overland flow directed into the basin, which would discharge from that basin through a pipe to a level spreader, which would spread that flow out, slow it down, this red line represents that flow path to the wetland, which is here, that flow would continue south kind of on this property line, bypassing either both the Bowdrey property and the Blake property. So what ends up happening is this green here, which is also shown in the poster, ends up being this gravel drive, but this is all vegetated area, so this is the hundred-foot, hundred-and-fifty-foot vegetated area, this area back here, the backside of the handling property is currently vegetated, so there's no change in ground cover to that, to those flows to those properties, and because we're capturing the stormwater, slowing it down before discharging to the wetlands, we don't feel that these wetlands will be adversely impacted. We kept a hundred feet from day one with this, we've been to conservation with an RDA, and again, we meet peak rate runoff.
Yeah, okay, I'm not convinced, unfortunately, I'm sorry about that, but I think that that's still a big issue, that corner of this site, I think it's a huge issue for water.
Which corner?
The one we're just working on.
This corner?
Yeah, I, I think that basin there is a huge issue, it's huge for me, I can't even express to you how big it is, okay? I am not going to jeopardize a family's well and drinking water or anybody's septic system for a solar field, I'm sorry, you have to come up with a better plan.
There's not, we're not impacting any of these properties.
Well, I think you are, because we've seen, we've seen the wetlands around these fields, and we have ten years of history now to look at, we've seen them slowly growing, and I was back there on that property, and they're going to get some of that water. I don't care what your basin does or what you say, that water, that property's already wet, and it's an issue for me. You really have to rework that side, that whole area of the field, if you want my support on this project.
Well, we have reworked that area, we've reworked.
Better than what it is, sir, that's all I'm going to tell you.
Well, let me tell you, explain what we've done to rework it. We've taken this basin outside of that one hundred and fifty-foot vegetated buffer, which had a pipe previously that discharged in this direction, we have moved that to a pipe that's discharged here, away from those properties, so that's getting into that.
What happens when it fails? And it just lets go?
Well, it's going to have to be monitored and inspected like any other facility.
Well, again, like I'm telling you, your whole engineering and everything may have this engineered spot-on, okay? But you're asking me to bet on that not happening, and that's somebody's livelihood, somebody that's been living in this town for their whole life, and I'm not willing to make that bet, I'm sorry, I'm not willing to place that bet, and right now, what I see has not swayed me away from that feeling. I don't see a, a good solution in what you've done here by moving a pipe, or moving where you think it's all going to go. That whole area is wet, and you're going to take all that water from that field, direct it to that basin, and then slowly let it out, that's the way these things are designed, not supposed to increase the flow at all, not supposed to, but it's going to flow longer than it would if it just rained for one day, because it's going to fill the basin up, and the basin needs time to drain, and I just feel that that corner of this site is a huge issue for me.
Yeah, so just, anything that gets into this basin that flows out does not touch these properties. Based on the contours, you can look at GIS map, which I'll show you in just a minute, USGS map, this red line represents where that water would flow, so based on the contours, all of this flow is coming in this direction to this point, there's nothing that can possibly flow from this site over onto this property.
Okay, I, I thank you for your, your answer.
Derek, you have a follow-up to that, please?
Follow-up, yes. You know, we, we design stuff, we do it on computers, on paper, GIS, it'd be perfect on paper, but what, sometimes what happens with nature, we really don't, can predict it a hundred percent. I heard that trees have been cut on those areas, and at the same time, neighbors have been, the water level has been going up since then, so that to me.
It's also been the radius season that we've had in the last twenty years, as far as what's flowing down, I'm the landowner, and yes, it was.
I understand.
But also, you have to.
I understand, I, I.
I tell you, we had over seventy acres of rainwater coming down. So of course, yes, it would be the wettest that's ever been in our lifetime.
Please stay with the engineers, okay? We understand, we understand that, we're talking with the engineers. You expressed yourself.
Thank you.
Last week.
Thank you. So my comment is, the true fact that when you cut the trees, neighbors suffered, now with a great solar facility, something goes wrong, and their houses get flooded, or some damage goes to property or individuals, who's going to care for that?
I just don't see the people that will be flooded, these houses are out here, this wetland is back here, for scale, this is a hundred and fifty feet, so you're talking probably a thousand feet to those houses that this site doesn't flow there.
How do you think the water tables work? They run all down, on the ground, you know, if there was an action and there was a reaction, we've got to look at that, you know, they cut the trees and they get water, oh, something's going on over here.
So, just if I may, back to the swale and the well in itself, right now it flows this way, towards these properties, so when the trees were cut, you know, that increasing peak flow, because there's no basin, that's going to happen, it's going to flow that way. The swale rate that we're proposing is going in here, right here, so similar to the last project, it'll catch it, direct it where we want it to go, which is towards the wetland, which is what we do on our designs, send it as an existing wetland, and then it'll go wherever it's going to go. On this property, just based on the topography, it doesn't go that way, once it hits this wetland, it flows south. Unfortunately, I know Jeff from Graves couldn't be here, he had to deal with something tonight, but that, you know, wetland review here is outside the typical stormwater review, but we're happy to show that, you know, we looked at that today, and it does flow that way, which again, it's outside of our property line, but we're happy to do that.
I accept your explanation, what I'm concerned is that, that looks great, awesome, you do something so to convince Bob and other members, but what if something happens to the neighbors? Who can assure me that all those calculations aren't going to work?
Your peer reviewer, I mean, that's why they're hired. So.
But he's.
And similar to the last one, we maintain it, we operate it.
So if something goes wrong, I go after the engineer, hey, look, poor these people got flooded.
But we're responsible to fix it, so if something happened, we'll take care of it, we'll mitigate it, we operate it long-term. So we're there long-term, we're the ones answering the call, if something goes wrong, if something fails on-site, we get the notification.
Don't tell them, tell them.
It's us, so again, call us. But we monitor it remotely, we have cameras on-site, so we can see snow levels, we can see things like basin, so we can see if something fails. We've never had a basin fail, not once, because we maintain them, we do O and M on them, operations of maintenance, we clean out the swales, when the basins fill up with sediment, we go out and clean it out, so we've never had one fail, and we have about, gosh, how many, twenty projects or so.
So, so you have a swale that's concentrating the water, bringing it down into a retention pond, and then dispersing it? I guess I wonder, how much water would naturally be absorbed by the site and naturally run off, and what's the difference with the new plan compared to how the water is existing, being absorbed on the land? Because from what I see, if you're protecting the Bowdries and the Blakes, there's still Audrey Demetrius' land south of that, and it looks to me like there is going to be an increase in volume of water running onto her land, which is just south of the Bowdries.
So, I'll hand part of that on to Travis, but just speaking to where this goes, because we looked at that on the GIS, there is a little pond, so it's not just, you know, an area of forest, it's wetland, there's actually a pond, so it'll.
Further down.
Yes, further down, so ultimately, that's where this flows down to, is that pond. In terms of the total volume, Travis?
Yeah, so volume is not something that's looked at under stormwater standards, there's certain standards to meet compliance with stormwater, peak rate runoff is one of them, so that's the number that we look at, which is at this wetland, so we analyze this wetland, everything that goes to that in the pre, being wooded, being in good condition based on soils, so that gives us a pre-number. Once we change the ground cover from trees to open meadow in these panels and take into apparent gravel drives, what ends up happening is that curve number goes up, the runoff goes up, which is why we need these basins to capture and mitigate, offset that runoff, so we're offsetting it with that basin, slowing it down to get into this level spreader, that ends up being less of a runoff rate in the post-conditions.
But isn't it true that that runoff rate would just be for a longer time? Because under normal circumstances, if it would just rain and rainwater were filtering through the trees and the meadow and all that, get down there, maybe you had ten thousand gallons, but now you're focusing forty thousand gallons off of all these solar panels down to this basin, and now that basin is just going to continually, day after day, trickle and empty into that property, whereas if it had rained, maybe. Whereas if it had rained, maybe there would've been two days of flow and then it's done.
Yeah, so that's...
At the same flow rate.
Well, that's one thing that...
So, you're dumping more water in one location than would normally. You're just doing it at the same flow rate that's naturally occurring now. Would you agree to that?
You're offsetting this. So what ends up happening is there's what's called the time of concentration. So as this water flows, based on kind of the ground cover, what flows in there in the pre, there's a certain time it takes. We do that same calculation in the post. So that number, it gives us that runoff, like I said, we offset that with a basin, slow it up, and then it drains to the level spreader.
But there will be more water draining in there at the same rate for a longer period of time, but there'll be more water by volume, gallons if you will, than there would be if it were just an open site.
Yeah. Yeah. So there is a slight...
Would you agree to that statement?
Say the statement again?
So, in that catch basin, it's gonna catch all that water from that portion of the site.
Yep.
So you would agree that more volume of water is going to empty into the, from the catch basin than would normally just trickle if it were just a wooded site? It's just gonna trickle at the same flow rate, a slow rate, but for a longer time because there'll be more, more volume.
There is slightly...
Because I think that's what's actually increasing our wetland sizes, is that we're concentrating more of the water of the site to the areas that we wanna dispose of it, which is a good thing. I'm not condemning that. I'm, I'm saying your engineers are doing their job. And like, you know, my partner on the board here is saying that, you know, well, the engineering numbers are the numbers, and engineers know what they're doing, and they get the right numbers.
Well, there's certain criteria...
But my concern, right, my concern is though, that our wetlands around these things, especially when you've got several of them in the same area, are growing. And personally, I think they're growing because we're filtering more water into one area versus that water that would be spreading out over the whole site. You see, we're directing all that water from the site here, and then we're letting it out, nice and slow, according to the state and the regulations and all that. It's just gonna go on forever, day after day after day, and if it rains again, day after day after day. And it's just gonna continually dump water into that wetland area.
But this is not the only site that ends up dumping water into that wetland.
So, we're only talking about this site, sir. We're not talking about everything else that already dumps water into that site.
This wetland is part of a larger wetland system. So if you're gonna say that this wetland's gonna get bigger, there's other aspects of this wetland other than this tiny little corner on our front.
So all I'm saying is that collecting all that water in one corner isn't helping our reason.
But that, that's downhill of everything without affecting properties.
I have all the information I need. Mr. Chairman, I release the floor to Sue.
Just real...
I just have one question.
Go ahead. Sure. I, I hear you. I think what it comes down to is, what is that volume, and is it a material impact on that wetland? So with the size of the wetland and the size of the watershed and the size of the pond that runs through everything considered, is whatever that delta is material? Is it gonna raise it an inch? Is it gonna raise it zero? Is it gonna raise it? So what I'm hearing, I mean, that's ultimately the question, right?
Yeah, ultimately, I think it's gonna grow the wetland in that area. And anytime you're growing wetlands around septic systems and wells, I get concerned.
Sure.
Whether they're in the, the wetland or not, which they're not, but I, I just get concerned. I get real concerned. I mean, these are people's lives we're talking about, and I, I just can't take that decision lightly.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Rayavangara, I'm a partner with...
Can you keep your voice up a little?
Sorry, Rayavangara, I'm a partner with, development partner at Syncarpus Solar. Yes, I, I have done about a hundred and fifty megawatts of projects across Massachusetts, and stormwater is always a very big issue. And the way we have addressed these things is through conditions during construction and during O and M. You said, we base everything on science, because that's what we, and you're right, not everything works out the way it should. Size of wetlands, the water flow, quality, quantity, everything. And one of the ways to manage that is through the planning board, making sure that there are certain conditions to monitor that. And that would be, I would say, an appropriate way, and that's how every single project I've been involved in since two thousand and ten in Massachusetts has done it. Good conditions to monitor the size of the wetlands, the water flows, the impact to the private wells, everything, everything. That would be, because we are doing absolutely everything we can to scientifically, of course, go through the engineering, but it's beyond the engineering. It's, you know, what is the impact to the abitaries? What is the impact to the private wells? Everything. And one way to manage that is maybe during construction, of course, but also during the entire O and M. You know, you monitor these sensitive receptors to make sure that you are managing them. And if there is a breach, then there is a corrective action that the applicant comes in front of the planning board with that. How are you gonna correct the situation? You have a certain amount of time to correct it. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you. My comments, probably not gonna be liked, but I know for a fact, the reason that the wetland has grown so much down on Little Rest Road is beavers. That's why the wetland has grown so much, because it was encroaching on the golf course when it was a golf course. I'm sorry, I understand how they worry, and you wanna capture as much as we possibly can and do everything, but we don't have control over the rain and everything that happens, but those darn little beavers.
Sit down, please.
Well, I had my hand up.
I, I have seen that, and I started the conversation with, the board will have questions.
Okay.
You've had a chance to ask one. When we're finished here, I'll turn right to the floor the way I have before.
Okay.
And hold your questions. If you need to write it down, we'll give you pens and papers, all right?
I don't need to.
We're gonna address what Graves engineering and what we have seen right now. Okay? Thank you.
But I could like my questions.
You will have your question as soon as we finish right here. I have two other board members plus myself on this issue. Anything else, sir?
No.
No? What was it? You don't have anything? Okay. Uh, I've got a couple, and it's with water. On C three point one, would you flip to that, please? This'll go to the first part of the questions that was entertaining, the second half will be, I'll reference water. All around the property, the property is in the lower right hand of the, the paper as shown, thank you. All around the property is New England Power easements, is that correct? All the way around?
On the north.
Well, on the north, and coming down onto your west also, are there, says?
On this west border, there's another solar project.
Yes, but I'm talking about the easement where your pen is showing up.
Yep.
It's your north and your northwest corner.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Did you fellows ever approach them for an easement to get in through, into the solar field that way, even though there is some wetlands in there? Did you ever approach them, yes or no?
We had a conversation with our contacts over there.
Okay.
They do not issue roads to private solar companies to go through their easement.
That's a fact, correct? Yes or no?
Running, when you run it parallel like this, they don't issue it. When you run it perpendicular, so if we just have to get from there to there, they would consider it, but when you run parallel, they won't do it.
With the easement that you was proposing, did you look at any other way to get into that, Robert?
We did.
Did you extend your search for any other way, yes or no?
Yes. So I'm gonna flip this just back.
Sure, yep, go ahead.
Overall. We started, because this is, we've been at this for about two years. So when you apply to National Grid, that's like a long lead time item. That was about two years ago. We put our point of interconnection right here, that our, this property has front-end material.
It does, yep.
Last May, in the spring, we delineated wetlands and found wetlands up in here that aren't on the GIS. Could we have gone through there and filled wetlands and gone through Army Corps and CONCOM? Yes, and we didn't want to, we didn't want to impact the wetlands, we wanted to find another way. Here, that's obviously the most logical point, because you have a substation literally here on the other side of the easement, but again, we can't go parallel to it that way. Then we went down the line, gauged interest, maybe not directly, which might've been a mistake, but figured out who might be interested here in giving access through the easement. The other place we went is all the way up north, at least thought about, where the other project, I don't know if you can visualize, it's solar here, so, and then it interconnects up here. I would love to come in that way, because it's existing, but we applied right here for the utility. So we applied to get into the project here. They can give us this, this distance is kind of leeway. We can go a couple more hundred feet down the road, but we can't go all the way up, kind of at the corner, I think, where the house is, and they moved, but that's the access for these projects. So that's too far. So this was, we just, again, we went down the line. That's the closest spot that we were able to get.
Did you approach the landowner of the property for an easement through their property?
Which property?
Which would be the family sitting behind you who owns the property.
Uh, Mr. Trombley here?
Yeah.
Um, I did not, because I heard that he was not interested at the time.
Please, uh, sit. Just one moment, please.
Sure.
I'll go, you, Wang, Phil, that property.
That would've been good. That's, I believe, Ray's old house, but Trombley's now owning the piece of land behind that, so there's no way to get through back there without going through their property. And again, I had heard they weren't interested. So then the next house is, is Emily, Debbie. So we talked to her for about a month, figured out where we could put it, and again, that's the, I would've loved to have it on this side, but there's wetlands up here at the northwest corner of her property, so that's why we put it down there.
Using your scale, the road's seven hundred and twenty feet long, correct? Just to the entrance fence going in, right inside, one inch for a hundred and twenty feet.
Sounds right. About eight hundred and eighty-seven feet.
That's overall, yes, sir. I'm just looking at the boundary property line and not going further past that, okay?
Well, that's the property line, yes.
Okay. All right, very good, I came up short on my answer, but that's eight hundred. Where's your, you're showing an outlet on the end of that road coming out to Little Rest Road, correct? A drainage outlet there?
That's correct.
Have you consulted with the town highway superintendent on this at all?
Um, I talked to him, I believe, at the first planning board meeting. He said that all we would have to do is speak with him about getting a curb cut permit.
That, that's for the driveway entrance, curb cut. Did you speak to him and reference the drainage and where the flow of water was gonna go? Was it gonna come down the road or wash off the side of the road during heavy rains like tomorrow? Today it was ten degrees, ground's frozen. Tomorrow's supposed to rain and snow, you're gonna have runoff at some point. It could happen for a couple days, you've got solid ground. Nothing's gonna penetrate it, everything's gonna run someplace. So is that water coming down to the end of the road, where's it gonna go before it hits on Little Rest Road? Have you, it doesn't show too much in your drawings there.
Yes.
It just stops right there, so anything that's gonna go down that road or that overflow right there, that little side, is gonna end up on Little Rest Road unless you have a culvert down there. Don't say a swell, but a culvert.
There is a...
Has that been cleared by the highway superintendent so that you can do that? Yes or no?
No, not yet.
Not yet, but it's on the plane, right?
Well, on our property, yes.
You're showing, you're showing that everything's stopping right there. So we, and I hate to use the word assume, but we can pretty much figure out anything that's gonna wash down that road tonight if it rains or tomorrow for the next day, and it is frozen ground, we all know, is gonna wash out onto the road.
So this area is set up to have this little basin here, which captures runoff from this...
And where's it gonna go?
So that will get into the ground again...
How's it gonna get into the ground? My point, just simple, it's, the ground's frozen right now. You can't get a damn thing into the ground.
I understand.
And it's gonna rain.
What doesn't sit in that basin, there's two PVC pipes, two six-inch PVC pipes.
Okay.
So there's existing water that goes there now, there's water that goes there in the post again.
Where's that water gonna go through your six-inch, your PVC pipes?
Say that again.
Under the road?
Nope.
Up against the road? Or down to, on that, on the, excuse me, on the Blake's property?
Nope. So there's a drop inlet right here. There's an existing swell on the side of Little Rest Road.
Yeah.
So there's a drop inlet here, there's a drop inlet here. Our driveways come in between those. So what ends up happening is anything on this side of that pavement will get into that swell, which it doesn't in the pre. It gets into that swell, runs across...
It does now. We're talking about after we get the road in, and an increase of, of water, because there's no road there now.
Right, so that water that gets onto that little paved apron, which will help prevent any wash, sediment getting into that road, would get into that drop inlet and would get into this drop inlet.
That drop inlet is whose?
That's in the town right away.
Fine. Make sure you have written permission from the highway superintendent, and you sit down and explain exactly what you said to us, and he has it in writing from you, and it's okayed, okay? Because right now, it's mine. You're using town facility. You should, please?
If you put, if you get the driveway permit, can you get a driveway permit, can you put culvert under it?
I don't know. It depends on how the, how the road is set, but you're gonna, I'm asking you to sit down with the highway superintendent, make sure that's all clear.
It won't be bad, okay?
Because it's on the, it's there.
And similar...
You're telling, excuse me, you're telling us this is where it's going. Let's make sure it's going into that drop inlet, outlet, or whatever we wish to call it, and it's going to take where it comes, all right? With that, still on the access road, my calculations might be off a bit, but the south side of that road is going to be less than a hundred and twenty feet from the Blake's, Blake's house, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you're saying, you're saying that you're gonna put your wires from your battery box, correct?
Utility lines.
Your utility lines.
So they're not us or National Grid.
From the battery box, all the way down eight hundred and twenty feet, buried.
Underground.
Underground, yes, sir. Where are they gonna pop up?
Right here. So this box, which we moved everything from poles to underground, there's two boxes here, one of them's a beer box, so it'll go to that first, and then the other one's a shut-off. So utility can go up from the switch, turn everything all the way back here off.
And you...
And then it'll go into the utility lines here.
Okay, you're saying there's not gonna be a pole at all down by that box, or anything else?
Not ours. With National Grid in their easement, I don't know what they're gonna do, but we're gonna bring it all the way down.
Their easement, if we look at easements for National Grid, it looks like a battalion of communication military equipment set up and put their antennas on their vehicles. You've got more antennas you can shake a stick at, there's nine at the dump, okay? Excuse me, in Lampa. And, holy crap!
Yeah.
All right, we don't have that in town yet, and we're gonna do it, and I can't, we can't? I don't know, somebody probably can, but National Grid won't. I have to buy five telephone poles to run power to my house down a public road.
So.
Okay, so what, excuse me, what I'm, what we're saying is you're gonna, that's nice to have a box there. And what National Grid does, they're gonna put whatever they want where they want, is that correct?
Not quite. So the short story is they made us pay for it. So whatever they're gonna do, we're paying for it. It's coming out of our pocket. This, putting this stuff, I'll call it underground, because the lines are underground and then this equipment is just in a transformer box, not transformer, but a metal box right on the ground. That alleviates the need for all that ugly stuff up on the pole. So if you drive by the other solar projects, they have switches, they have meters, they have all this stuff on the poles, that's all right here. So what they're gonna have here is what's called a riser pole. All it's doing is coming up from the ground on a conduit on the side of a pole, up into the system. They might even use, they might not change a thing. They have poles there, they could tap right into one of those and go up. So the most they would do is one new riser pole in addition to this, these boxes on the ground here.
With the plan, when I was looking at the plan, where is the meter box showing size, shape, what it's set on or anything else? That is still part of the project, is that correct?
It, it's utility equipment. So it's National Grid spec. We paid for it, they put it in. It's like, think of it the same as the stuff on a pole, but it's just on the ground. So they haven't told us yet what that spec is going to be.
Okay. All right.
But we know, just to finish, we know it'll fit. So we designed these in a way where we know roughly what they're gonna put in, it'll fit on these. If we can go smaller on these, we'd love to. We could come back after we've noticed what it is.
Going back to the water again.
Yeah.
Is that box, I looked at it, measured, is that box gonna be right next to or the outflow or the underflow or wherever the water's gonna flow from that, from that entranceway? Where is it on the?
No, so those pipes are actually on this side.
Right, so they're on the south side. You pointed north and south just a moment ago, because I watched your.
The pipes that discharge are here. There's a drop inlet here, a drop inlet here.
Which one are you using?
Drop inlet.
Yeah.
It'll flow to each of those. It's a high point where our driveway's coming in.
Where's the box?
The box is.
Are the pipes underneath the box or the pipes in front of the box?
The box is uphill of that existing swale.
And the other drop inlet?
And the other drop inlet. So the drop inlet is set down into the swale.
Okay. All right, okay. Because you got a box in the same place you were pointing. More clear. Let's go back, if you would please, to the color display of the overlay. The one with the green, red and now the dark black. Yeah. Yeah, sure, that's the one where you're using. All your green on the property, of the property up top, okay? Where you come over with the small triangle there. Yes, sir. Okay, with that, all we're gonna do is end up increasing wetlands further outside that, correct? As the rain, you've got, you showed that is wetlands on that property, did you not?
No.
What did you say it was?
So there are wetlands that aren't on the GIS that are somewhere in here. No one really knows where they are exactly. But yeah, they haven't been done.
Okay, why is that green reaching outside the project area right there then? That little triangle shape?
This triangle?
Yeah.
This is on the parcel that we're accessing. It's part of this because we're doing the gravel drive here. We needed to look at stormwater here.
All right. So your stormwater runoff will increase at some point. You've got it right there. It's gonna increase at some point whether it rains heavy or not. You've got, you've got surface water today. It's still out here on frozen ground. If it rains heavy again, it's just gonna extend out further before it has a place to reach into the ground, is that correct?
No, because all this flow based on these contourses, this is uphill. Everything that flows here comes down.
Yeah.
This hill comes down into this wetland and keeps going south. There's no ponding areas.
No, there's none. It's wa, it's surface water. Because behind every one of those properties, I've walked, okay? And it's wet. And it's wet now, it's ice. And if it rains now or later in the sun, in the spring or the summer again, once so much water and the water table comes to the point where it can't be absorbed, that water's gonna extend, correct?
I don't believe it will.
Please, it's a basic, simple answer, yes. Because that water table in the ground is gonna be percolating up on top of the ground. And once that water runs on top of that ground, it's gonna just extend to different areas. We can't control what water wants to do. You all know that. You've got a leak in the pipe and it runs ten feet down into the walls. Water's gonna find an avenue, but once it's percolated property, and that, I believe is the right word, the water gets, the water table gets saturated and the water comes to the surface because it's not absorbed there. Okay? And it's gonna reach out and spread, right?
It's gonna flow downhill.
It's gonna flow downhill into the other two properties. And my, my point being that as it starts flowing down, your little swale on there in the winter months or whatever else is gonna be frozen. And that swale is gonna extend. The water's gonna extend past it into other areas.
That swale is a foot and a half deep which runs here along this area. So there's nothing post-conditioned that would run from our project site that would overtop the swale. We looked at the capacity of the swale.
That's right now. What's in five years when that ground turns to concrete?
What do, what do you mean?
That whole solar field and that swale after maintenance, some kid, an eighteen-year-old that you hired to mow the lawn, comes in and mows the lawn. Last time he mowed it was November fourteenth, because it was a good day hypothetically. Now the ground's frozen. That swale is a foot and a half deep. Water's gonna get in there and sit. Snow's gonna come melt. Water's still gonna sit there because it's on top of ice. Then it's gonna overflow and continue where it wants to go. And then it's gonna start to run south, yes. But it's gonna, although it's gonna run behind the properties. That's what's happening with the Bowdries property. You're increasing a damp wetland at certain times of the year because the water can't soak in. And it's gonna increase in the back of the property. So now I wanna buy behind them, they wanna sell me the property behind them. I'm gonna build on the water, have a floating on foundation.
So speech, just speaking to that, the Bowdries specifically. Right now, if you look at the topo, it's coming down north and south. Water comes, really this cone is pretty good.
Exactly, yeah.
Goes like that.
Yeah.
We're gonna catch it here, shoot it down here, and it's gonna circumvent their property. So instead of going like this, you're gonna hit this line and then shoot straight down south.
Everything scientifically is all by numbers and let's go back and look at everything, correct? And you base it on the hundred and ten projects you have. Every project is different. Every piece of property is different, every contour is different. You don't have the same all the time, so you consistently adjust them, correct? When you look at areas like this where you have a lot of water runoff, Warren is not flat. It's not Oklahoma or Illinois, all right? You guys, and I shouldn't say you guys, solar is being put all which ways everywhere. And you can convince us, you can sit here with all the scientific answers. Yet when you look at the scientific answers and the money you guys make from education and doing this, it all turns in a heartbeat because things move. Weather changes. It's changing a lot more. You guys are looking at water, you've made the statements, more and more water is existing, okay? To protect people and the properties, not, not on the site, where a butter's too, you made a comment about the small pond on the property down below. That's her pond. And it's been there for years, I know, okay? When you walk that far corner down there south, where does it end up when that water comes out? Do you know? Where does it end up?
In a small lake in.
Yeah, Sherman Pond. So you're increasing it all the way down. Sherman Pond's never had those problems before.
Yeah, those problems won't stem from this stuff.
It doesn't, how can you say it's not going to? A scientific number and a math equation does not prove anything. Terrain changes. It has a, it has a, it has a balance of absorption. And when the absorption area is done and it can't absorb any more water, it just increases the flow. Her pond increases or whatever the case may be. And the flow which goes right down through the aisles here, down through other properties in Sherman Pond. Walk the back of every one of the houses. I bet you I'm the only one in the room that has.
No, that would be true.
Okay. But it's, all right, all the way down to Sherman Pond, okay? Well, boy, I've been to Sherman Pond up and down in quite a bit. I had a good job. And it, it's just, that's a big issue. It's the biggest issue there. How we can, how, why don't you have other retention ponds in the middle of the site? So that the water will flow slowly through in different ways and then come down to your southwest corner. You put one at the end and saying that whole facility is gonna drain there.
Not the whole facility, no.
Well, that area is. Why didn't you place in that area other retention ponds that the water could go into, come out and go down and gradually break up its course and filter through other areas?
Because right now.
Because science says.
Being a meadow and being all gently sloped down towards that basin, it's all gonna sheet flow. So you're not concentrating it putting it in one area. So that's gonna sheet flow in different spots of that swale it's gonna get in.
Figure it out and put different retention ponds in there so it sheet flow creates, creates speed as it picks up, does it not?
It does as it moves down the line.
Okay, so you put a couple retention ponds in different areas on that side so that when it gets to the bottom one, the water's alleviated, the pressure's down, and you have a natural flow that's been broken up. It's pretty simple to look at. Sometimes you wonder if you guys do water.
That's what the swale is for. The swale is doing that up here to catch it all.
A swale isn't gonna catch a darn thing. You know what, I'll show you, swales right where I live. And boy, you don't, you think water runs off Coey Hill? All right? Come on up. Swales don't do a thing. They look good, it's a funny word to talk about. Who's gonna maintain them? You guys talked about maintenance.
We are.
Okay, wonderful. I want to, you just made a statement and I want it in writing, that you're gonna maintain those. I wanna know the time of year you're going in to do it. I wanna know what maintains.
It's in the O and M.
That's fine, I'll review it again and find out how it's gonna be maintained and what you're gonna do. Because every time you're gonna change that swale, you're gonna come back here.
Yeah.
You're gonna come back here and apply for changing the swale.
Correct.
Because your, your clay, your gravel and everything in the base has to be either removed, changed or whatever, correct?
Which is why it's better for us to maintain it regularly.
Right, you get my drift on that one?
I do, yep.
All right, what I'd like to do now is open up everybody else, please. All right, stand by. Derek?
Do you, do you, have you done any ground testing to see how low is the water table?
Uh, Geotech?
Not, not yet, no.
Okay, I'll follow that up. Why haven't you done it yet? The water table's at its height. You're waiting for it to get down below, just like a perk test for a, for a septic. Come around doing it in August, because it's been raining the last three weeks. If you did it last week, I'd be out. Me. How come? When are you gonna do it? Answer the question first.
So the Geotech, and correct me if I'm wrong, in the stormwater, I believe we, it doesn't, you don't need it for the calculations on the water table. What the Geotech is for is for the posts. So figuring out how good the ground is at holding the posts in the ground. So the Geotech isn't water table tests.
Okay.
Because in, we're not doing any excavations on site. Our basins are actually in fills, so they're at grade. And we're not gonna intercept groundwater and we're not gonna be digging down into groundwater as part of our construction of this.
All right, Derek, can you add?
I'm good, thank you.
Now I'd like to open up to the public, please. For Butters or anybody else who comments, please, go ahead.
Can we go back to the, the water flow map?
Sure.
So I guess my concern, it's, it's similar, but I just wanna really go at this point. Right now, as the site exists, water is running across it and off it onto Butters at whatever rate it is, just where it is down south. One of your engineers said that there will be an increase once the solar panels go in in water flow, just given the nature of what you're doing. Whether it's a lot or a little, we don't know. But whether there is or isn't that swale, all that water that's naturally just kind of running across the site now, it definitely is concentrating it and putting it in one spot and it definitely is dumping it off onto a neighbor. So I guess what I don't understand is how can, how could you be a good neighbor and then fundamentally change the, the nature of a neighboring piece of property when with a little more engineering and maybe a little more cost, you could actually recharge the groundwater on your site? So that swale, it's true that it's protecting the people who complain, but the person who could be here tonight owns that piece of land where the water's being dumped out on, excuse me, out onto. So I would ask the engineers to go back and think about being a good neighbor and just recharging right on your site as you had mentioned. Or at least dispersing it in a way that it's not gonna fundamentally change the nature of the surrounding land.
So I think at a minimum, what we'll do, because on every other project we've ever done, we always channel the water to the wetlands. It's what the state wants us to do, it's the proper procedure. The thinking there is it won't materially change the size of the wetland. Here, obviously, they've grown. We don't know why, maybe it's beavers, maybe it's the season, maybe it's whatever. If it doesn't materially change the wetland, which we think it might, then that explains why the state wants us to do it that way. And that's why we've done that land on other projects. So we will look at that. Total volume, does it change the size of the wetland? We ran some rough numbers today that Graves hasn't had a chance to review, which is why we can't really talk about them. It doesn't change it. While it is an increase in volume slightly, it doesn't increase the size of the wetland.
When you do those calculations, are you doing it in a broad way? Are you doing it in a specific local way? So, because you could look at your whole site and say, well, the runoff is X.
It's in a broad.
And you've taken all that runoff and put it in one place.
Sure.
So it's in a broad way in terms of the size of the wetland in there?
The general area.
Yeah, so this wetland continues down south as was shown on the GIS map. So fundamentally, you need to look at that wetland, everything that contributes to that wetland to get an idea if that wetland would change.
And is your opinion that it would not change, given the fact that you've taken several acres, put a swale in and pointed it right at that wetland?
Yes, that's correct. So there's about a hundred and ninety acres that contribute. Let me just look to this USGIS map. So there's about a hundred and ninety acres. So this is a wetland south, which is actually in Burnfield. Our site is up in here. So this is that corner of that wetland. So, yeah. So this outline represents about a hundred and ninety acres. Our site in this area which flows towards that wetland is about nineteen acres. So it's about ten percent of that whole watershed that contributes to this wetland. So that's really a drop in the bucket considering what flows into this wetland, which again goes south to that pond that you mentioned, Sherman Pond, I guess?
That's correct.
Which goes to that. So that's kind of the area that we looked at as far as what would need to affect that wetland. Now look, there's a bunch of different properties and a bunch of different land that goes to that wetland and contributes to it, you know, outside of our area, which is just this, this corner here.
Other questions, folks? Floor is open.
So you said best practice was having the water flow into a wetland, but you're, and you talked about your other projects you've done. Do your other projects also have like three hundred and ninety acres? Or how many acres are already existing solar fields around there?
Three hundred and seventy-one.
Three hundred and seventy-one acres of surrounding solar fields around there? That runs the, your plots that you're doing?
Which is already, yeah.
Is that normal? Is that, is that typical with happening or?
So I can't say that we have, no.
Okay.
When we were.
This might be a one-off case, right?
Well, when we were looking at this property two years ago, we saw all the solar in the area and said, what better place for solar?
Yeah.
It's landlocked, you can't see it, there's, up here it's solar friendly.
You can see it.
Well.
I live on the road. I drive by it every day, so.
No, not that, I mean, I'm saying, I understand. But our, our project is tucked away. It's a great site when we're looking for a site. So that's why we picked it, you know? We didn't, we didn't know what we know now.
Yeah, I guess my thing is that, yeah, so best practice, yes. I would say that this might be a little different bit of the case due to the fact that the land has probably changed or the ecosystem around it has changed probably drastically in the past ten years because of how many fields are in there now. So, and I think that's kind of where Warren's at right now, is kind of dealing with that impact, so.
Very good. Questions, Scott?
Just, just quickly, I wanna, I'll go up on the top there where the basin is. You had said there's a basin up on the top also.
Yeah.
So that's the basin that also leads into wetlands and increases that wetlands in the top area also.
Well, flows into that.
Where you guys were supposed to, where you guys were supposed to go in at that time, but you couldn't go because it's all wet already, it's saturated.
It is, it's wetland.
It's wetland.
I mean, there are wetlands, don't there?
It's gonna continue to increase there. So my house, where my house is located, and then that area's gonna increase and then that area's gonna increase and come down towards my area even more so. It's wet, very wet up in that area. We keep talking about in the back where it's all going down, but where's my protection of all the water? It's gonna eventually slow down towards my properties.
So, two things on that. I think earlier Travis mentioned the water that's gonna flow right out of here.
And that's the same. Where's that going?
It's, that's not gonna increase. So that flow is the same, just based on the topography and...
It's not gonna increase, no.
Not what not? Here, I'll pull it up.
So this small area here, this orange area would be what would touch your property line here. So that area is in the preconditions, existing now from the site. The rest of this site gets into this wetland which flows in this direction.
Right, okay, stop, go back. That wetland there goes down towards my home there. There's no barriers to stop that water, it's coming down off that field there. Have you seen the way the land goes down there? Goes right directly towards my house. So all that water's gonna saturate and come down towards my house out of that basin as it slowly goes.
Now that, this basin is over in this direction.
Right.
This basin was discharged here, based on this topo would go straight north.
You would hope it'd go that way, have you seen the land up in that area? Have you seen the wetness in that area?
I mean, it's a wetland.
Yeah, it's a wetland, right, okay. And then, so that was a point I just wanted to make, of how wet that is, how saturated it's gonna continue to get, which is gonna come probably combined down towards the Bogers' wetland. But then for the buffer, could you explain to me the buffer, the 150-foot buffer? I know, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but I do know you had said you changed the buffer.
Yeah, and you can see it on these revised plans, so...
And I don't understand what you did with that.
Two things, oh, okay. So before we showed a fence and then some trees on your fence...
You were talking about fencing and stuff like that, then you changed it to a bunch of trees.
Could you come up, it might be easier to see. There's a, in that field, it goes on... Evergreen plantings, all up in that field. So the way that the bylaw is written, you need to have 150-foot vegetated buffer from the property line for a property residential use. So, since the last meeting down here, we pulled that in 150 feet. Up here, because it's a field, there's no vegetated buffer. So we're making 150-foot vegetated buffer up there in that field.
Sir?
On the map with the water runoff, you have a series of dotted lines. You look at the water runoff, right there. What do those dotted lines that went on to my property represent?
Uh, which is your property?
The Lake property?
Yeah, so this is the watershed areas that we look at. So when we look at the drainage flow analysis points, we look at basically where the water ends up. So these areas show what goes into the wetland here. We broke it up a little further for this exercise and discussion tonight, and added this line in here to show what was directly going to these properties in the pre.
Right, but I'm talking about the guideline that goes on to my property along the side of the access road.
Right, exactly.
What does that represent on my property?
Yeah, so this portion of your property actually runs down, and there's a little hill here behind your house.
That's right where my septic system is. I'm concerned with the water running down there and contaminating and flooding my septic system. That's right where my leach field is.
So that is running there in the pre.
Right towards my leach field, I'm not happy with that.
Currently.
It's the current state.
This is the current.
It's the current state, it's not really the future state, right?
Right, but now you got direct even more water down.
No, we're doing less, we're gonna do less.
Where the access road, you're directing water down the access road, you're bringing more water towards my septic system.
Yeah, so we have a roadside swale alongside of this, a riprap swale with check dams.
On your side of Israel Way.
Yeah, it's my side.
So we're capturing that water, bringing it into this basin.
Which is right on my property line.
Which is fairly close to this property line, and then discharging it into that drop inlet.
Still, you're bringing water towards my septic system.
But all of this water that is currently running there is no longer... See, this pink area, right, which it leads to the four. But all this runoff is going this way. Right now, this whole area is actually running through the swale, right? So there...
If there's gonna be less water, why are you putting in drainage?
What's that?
If there's gonna be less water, why are you putting in drainage?
To create the...
We need to put in water.
Right. So it doesn't go towards your property, so to keep it away from the neighbors.
So you're gonna guarantee me, you're gonna replace my septic system, my septic fails?
No.
Because of this?
We're doing the engineer to make sure that no more water goes toward your property. And if it does, again, there can be conditions to fix that, so no more water goes there. If the septic fails, it's hard to see why it failed. But we'll do everything we can to keep the water away from it. And again, there's less going towards your property because it's getting put into this wetland.
I don't believe that. Another thing though, coming down that access road, what side of that access road is the power lines gonna come down?
Uh, the north side, except it's, again, it's all underground. So there's no more poles on the road.
Correct, but you're gonna be cutting down more trees to put that in.
For the access road, yeah.
For the access road, you're cutting down trees. But this is gonna be on north side, you're not gonna cut down any more trees in that buffer zone down, well, there is no buffer zone there. But there's trees between my property line and where you have it staked out. Are you gonna put those power lines down that side or on the north side?
The north side, so the northernmost side.
So you will not be cutting any more trees down in between the access road and the property line?
No, no, just the road. We don't wanna cut more than we have to.
And why, that road, you told me at one point in time it was 38 feet, but when I went up and back, it's 28 feet in the pit, approximately. So it gets closer to my property as it goes up. They're right on the property line. It's right on. I think now, you know, once I've done a lot of research, the bylaw states 150 feet. I think we'll stick with 150 foot. Why can't this access road go closer to Deborah Handey's house? 150 feet away from my property line?
Because, because the wetland's up there. So that's why we're not as far down as we get.
So I know I'm getting screwed on this.
I mean, with all due respect, we did meet and talk about it.
Right, but I wasn't aware of the bylaws. The bylaws, you didn't tell me that. That there's 150-foot buffer in the bylaws.
So, the way that the town has permitted these in the past, the roads are not subject to that bylaw.
Well, it's in the bylaws though, it says it right there in the definitions.
For the internal access roads and the solar...
Internal access roads, yeah. Commercial solar facility that is structurally mounted underground, its primary purpose is electrical generation for the wholesale electrician markets. It includes service and access roads. Equipment, machinery, and structures utilized in the connection of, with the converse, and with the conversion of solar energy into electrical power.
So, our view on that is that's just a dirt access road, that's the utility access. In the past, the town has permitted roads within that buffer, not required that 150-foot or 50-foot as it was before they changed the bylaw.
So you're like 80 feet from my actual house. No matter what window I look out of my house, I'm gonna see power lines or something related.
No, you're not, it's underground, again, it's gonna be underground. But just, let's talk about the 50-foot thing, because I did...
If I may, we'll stop it right here. Quality of life is going down because when he opens a bedroom window or a kitchen window or the window on the side of that house, he now has a road, and he now has, now has a view that wasn't there before. So quality of life has changed, not for the better. That's it. Come with you and answer your questionnaire. Derek, you have one, please, thank you.
I'm not speaking myself right now, I'm speaking from some resident from the area. He posted online. He says when somebody is looking at buying a house and sees this on maps, they are more inclined to pass and keep looking. And that's in that area where we have all this panel. So what I'm trying to say here is, please understand and hear the pain that all the neighbors are going, the great Butters and some people that live around the area, whether they're suffering with this kind of projects.
Okay, and then there was a question brought up today. How the Hanleys, is that the property that you're going on?
Yeah.
For the easements?
Yeah, the access road. Right now, the assessors are looking at how the property's gonna be accessed because it's commercial in a residential assessment area. So the Hanleys' assessments are gonna change. And the state was asking about that too. So that's just one thing. Yet, we understand, and I think you fellows understand too, and that's why I started my questions out with easements, and looking at the property owner's home that they went through and whatever. Because everybody on that road is powered out. Good job. Solar powered out. And one more, it is setback, yes, it is. Obviously, there's been work on the, figuring it out over the two years period. Yet, it's just one more in an area. And as you folks know, and as you're learning, we're learning, towns and cities are trying to, are passing bylaws and regulations, rules and regulations to limit the amount of solar that go in there with certain areas of towns, and they're designated areas. That is the most congested area in town. And why did it take a few fellows so long to get that piece of property working? It took two years. Jerry Morris Fields have been in five years. Golf course has been in...
10 years.
10 years, yeah, 10 years. And now all of a sudden you show up and wanna squeeze one in there too. It's just what people are venting about and what we're talking about. What I'd like to do here with this is, the board would consider... We have a couple more questions for Graves, okay? And we'll get them to you also. One thing that we're gonna ask Graves to do, and correct me if I'm wrong here, folks, we're gonna also speak to Graves to take another look at the water. We have what you presented, we want them to take a little more in-depth look at it. I know you've been spending quite a bit of time in our office reviewing past decisions of sites. May the bylaw change. So therefore, with the special permit, where now you will be one of the first to be looked at under our new bylaw changes. Okay, special permit, the site plan. The others are in the past. The decisions were written for boulders that had to be crushed, the golf courts that was taken up, the choosers was involved with it. And others. So please remember, this special permit and the site plan is from May 8th on. And every site is different. Every site is different. I'll take one more comment on this whole proceedings tonight, and then we'll bring it to a, a question, two more, one's in the science, with scientific numbers.
Good. Yeah, just to be 100% clear, the new bylaw, the engineering firm is now going to have to apply for a variance for the access road because of the new bylaw?
The way it's written, that'll be, that's part of the course. They have a copy of the bylaw and they've gotta read it.
So I guess I wanna be 100% clear because what I heard you just say is, well, there's past precedent, but the zoning changed. So it seems to me that you have to have to apply for a variance.
The bylaw changed, the zoning is set up.
So, the mechanism changed from site plan review to special permit? The words did not. So the words of permitting the project didn't change one bit? It just changed from a site plan review to the special permit?
The buffers changed.
And the buffer changed from 50 feet to 100?
There are a few other questions, why you had that comment?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. We are going through the bylaw, and we are making sure we comply with every aspect of the bylaw. And the reason it's taken this long is first we had to get to the national grid process to see if the project was even viable. Once we knew it was viable, we reached out individually to the Butters, landowners. There has been work and diligence with every single project. What we request is that you just get a fair hearing, and you have given us a fair hearing. And that we would like to provide the information you need. And as I proposed, and as I have experienced in every project, during construction, during O and M, long-term, with stipulations of... Because everything, you're absolutely right. Science can only project things, model things. How are you gonna ensure compliance? The only way, and every single project I've done, ensuring of compliance is, you know, you meet certain standards, if you don't, you come back to the planning board. You're required to do that, and you're required to correct the breach.
No more questions, I said that, we had one and one is two. What we'll do is, will we, Cat? Vicki Callender?
Hi, I agree with that. Okay, we moved ZPT to the 28th of January.
Both of them again?
Yes.
Both in the same time?
Yeah.
So you need to come that night?
Yeah. Go ahead.
So, do you wanna do, are we looking at February?
Yeah. We had, what, 3, 4, and 11 or something?
No, 4 and 11. 4, the 11th, we were talking about Portin.
Yeah.
Rago.
Okay.
So we have the 4th or the 20th, Natalie.
I would still, I would like to go on the 11th, because that one's, that one's just gonna be a conversation.
Is the 18th closed? Is the 18th closed?
Yes, that's a holiday.
Put it on for the 11th.
You don't wanna do it on the 4th?
Up to the board, Bob, 4.
I'm sorry, 11?
No, 4, right now.
February?
I...
Yeah.
Alright, 7:20 on the 4th. By then we should have answers from Graves. I'll make sure Jeff gets ahold of you guys, and it's gonna be on the wire, okay? It's just one thing. Virgilation, the whole nine yards there. And then whatever other questions, but you also find out about it too, okay? And then we'll open a channel there. And then, folks, think about where we are, know what we're doing, you already got most of everything that we have, we've got some other questions. You've had this tonight, and then we'll be back here at 7:20 on the...